Thank you. Welcome, everyone, to our September 4th zoning here, and we are the Planting Commission. As our custom, we like to start off the day with a prayer. And our Reverend Pastor today is Tim Rien from the Christ Lutheran Church. For those that are wanting to participate, feel free.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Invite us into a time of prayer. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks on this day for the many good and blessed gifts that you give to us each and every day. We give you thanks for the long weekend and our time to rest. We give you thanks for the ability to come and begin our labors again today. Lord, bless this time. Blessed as we gather, as we plan, as we work for your good and your order in this world. Continue to lead us and guide us. Continue to give us grace and patience and peace. Lord, all this, we lift up to you in your most holy and heavenly name. Amen.
Amen. And for those who are able, Officer Art Cobb County Police Department leaders in pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Now, usually as our procedure, I turn it over to John Peterson of the zoning department. He will explain the rules and regulations and the time limits. So I'll turn it over to you, John.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today's hearing, we conduct with the process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. Then we're going to call for any opposition, signify that they are here also, so they can be counted for the official record. After the counting of the opposition, the applicant and the opposition will be asked to come forward, be sworn in, so they can present testimony to the Planting Commission. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time, so convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute timeframe. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on an issue, you might want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information twice. After both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for questions or comments. After that, the board will make a decision to either hold, continue, approve, or deny the case at hand. There is one case on today's printed agenda which has been withdrawn without prejudice. That's case LUP 10 of 2018, Aaron O'Driscoll. That case has been withdrawn and will not be heard today. Additionally, there are four cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued and will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z 26 of 2018, Ostel Cosmetic Dentistry. The case was continued by the staff until the November 6, 2018 Planting Commission zoning hearing. So Z 26 will not be heard until November. Resoning case Z 37 of 2018, Winchester Parkway LLC. The case was continued by the staff until the October 2, 2018 Planting Commission zoning hearing. So Z 37 of 2018 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z 56 of 2018, Wright Oakdale LLC. That case was continued by the staff until the October 2, 2018 Planting Commission zoning hearing. So Z 56 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z 57 of 2018, John Gaskin. That case was continued by the staff until the October 2, 2018 Planting Commission zoning hearing. So Z 57 will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Commissioners, there are two cases that are asking where that need to be continued today that are on the agenda. First case is rezoning case Z 53, Olivia Benitez. Madam Chair and Board, this case needs to be continued by the Planting Commission, because they didn't do their mailings properly. So we would like the Board to continue this case until the October date.
Okay. We need a vote in the House, so this will be in the House of the District.
Make a motion that we continue Z 53 till our October hearing.
We have a motion to have a second. A motion second. All those in favor? That's 4 to 0 to hold.
Thank you. Additionally, rezoning case Z 58, Bobby Eltero. This case needs to be continued, Madam Chair and Board, so the applicant can continue to work with the neighbors and the site plan.
And this is my case, and we're working with the neighbors and the applicant. So I would make a motion that we can continue this until the October meeting. Have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor? And that carries 4 to 0.
Thank you. I would like to ask people in today's audience, if you have a cellphone, please turn the volume off on your cellphone. The ringing does interfere with broadcasting presentations. So if you have a cellphone, please turn the volume off. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If within two years, immediately proceeding in the filing of a rezoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 more is made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this is located on the table in the back of the room. I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by this board at their discretion. And with that, Madam Chair, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Please.
Thank you. Cobb County Planting Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for September 4, 2018. Resoning case Z 51, The Silver Manor LLC, request rezoning from NRC to CRC for the purpose of an Assembly Hall for Special Events with ancillary offices in landlots 1,000 and 1,001 of the 19th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Floyd Road, southeast of Floyd Drive. The Planting Commission recommends deletion to NRC, subject to the letter from Mr. Garvis L. Samuels Jr., dated August 24, 2018, special exception used for an Assembly Hall for Special Events, Fire Department comments and recommendations, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations, and Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Resoning case Z 51. That directory shows no one opposed. Resoning case Z 52, Joseph W. Curtis II and Carol M. Curtis, request rezoning from R 80 to R 40 for the purpose of a single-family house in landlot 1002 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Timberland Drive, south of Palmar Drive. Staff recommends approval, subject to the proposed garage to be architecturally compatible with the existing home. Fire Department comments and recommendations, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations, and Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? That directory shows the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? Resoning case Z 52. That directory shows no one opposed. Resoning case Z 59, Urburian Inc., request rezoning from LI to LRO for the purpose of a daycare facility in landlot 44 of the 18th District. The property is located on the southeast corner of Veterans Memorial Highway and Cooks Road. Staff recommends approval, subject to site plan received by the zoning division on July 24, 2018, with the final approval by the District Commissioner. Letter of agreeable conditions for Mr. Garvis L. Samuels Jr., dated July 24, 2018. Landscape plan to be approved by the District Commissioner. Compliance with the Veterans Memorial Highway Guidelines. Fire Department comments and recommendations, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations, Stormwater Management Division's comments and recommendations, Department of Transportation's comments and recommendations, and Planning Division comments and recommendations. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Resoning case Z 59. That directory shows no one opposed. Moving into special land use permits on the consent agenda. SLEP 9 Jubilee Christian Church International Incorporated, request a special land use permit for the purpose of an expansion of a church and a school in landlots 718, 717, and 764 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north side of Macedoni Road, west of Ernest Barrett Parkway. Staff recommends approval, subject to District Commissioner to approve the final landscape plan. District Commissioner approval of building elevations. Letter from Mr. Parks F. Huff, dated August 29, 2018. Fire Department comments and recommendations, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations, Stormwater Management Division comments and recommendations, and Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? That directory shows the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? SLEP 9. That directory shows no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board.
Thank you, John. It's back to this board. Does anyone have any comments or changes?
I do have changes. You want to go first? Okay. I do have changes to three of the cases. And these have already been discussed with applicants. Z 51, hours of operation Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Friday through Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to midnight. And then the Architectural and Landscape Review Committee, which is provided for in the stiff letter, shall also review any gates to be installed. And the District Commissioner shall have final approval of all items under the purview of the Architectural and Landscape Review Committee. And then, before I state the next two, I'll just explain. There's a fence currently on the property line, but we moved the property line so that they could incorporate more into here. The neighboring parcel is required to have a fence there, but just in case they don't, we want to make sure there's a fence, because it's not good-looking behind it. So should the adjacent property owner not place a fence on the common property line, excluding the 49.94 feet in the southeast corner, or at any time remove the fence, there should be a privacy fence installed along the common property line by the owner of this property. And then, when the existing fence is relocated, additional fencing will be required. Additional fencing shall be consistent with the existing fence. As an alternative, all new fencing can be used to replace existing fence. So that's for Z 51. Z 59, add, there shall be an Architectural Landscape Review Committee which shall be charged with the review of any proposed landscaping, signage, fencing, and building architecture. The committee shall consist of a representative of the Mabelton Improvement Coalition, representative of the applicant, and a representative from Cobb County Community Development Agency. District Commissioner shall have final approval of all items. That's there. And then on SLEP 9, just want to explain this real quick. I'm going to take out a couple of the minor modification things, because this is a very large tract, 10 acres, and it's going to be developed over like 10 years. And realized, if we say they can't move the building closer to another property line, it means they can't move the building, even though the building's like tons of land all around it. So just want to take out a couple of those. And the stiff letter from Parks F. Huff, delete items 8B and 8C. Those are changes.
Changes. Any other changes?
On Z 51, did you want to put a time limit on those fence changes? Well, that's a good point. Let's do it within 90 days from BOC final decision. Thank you. Good idea.
Andy?
Yes, I had a couple of additional stipulations for Z 52. I have not reviewed these with the applicant, but I hope they will be objectionable. Add at the end of stipulation number one, the phrase "and approved by the District Commissioner." That's relative to the elevation being compatible with the existing architecture. And then add stipulation number six, that the size of the proposed garage be limited to 832 square feet. The location to be as shown on the site plan received 51118. And stipulation number seven, that the setback for an accessory building reduce from 100 feet to 15 foot from the north property line for this structure only.
All right. We had the changes. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as revised.
Second. We have a motion as second. All those in favor? And that carries 4 to 0. Thank you. Thanks, John.
All those folks who are on consent agenda, you're free to go. Just come back here for the final hearing in two weeks. Moving into the continued held agenda. Resoning case Z 40, Jim Chapman Communities, request rezoning from R 20 to RSL for the purpose of an age-restricted independent senior living facility in landlots 284 and 285 of the 16th District. The property is located on the north side of North Booth Road, the west side of Bell's Ferry Road, and the southeast side of I 575. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z 40? That directory shows no one opposed.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, some good people I was working with.
Good morning. Madam Chairman, for the record, my name is Garvis Sam. And I'm the law firm of Sam's, Larkin, Huff &amp; Bailey, and represent Jim Chapman Communities. In connection with this application for rezoning, I have with me today Mr. Jim Chapman, who many of you will know, recently won Builder of the Year Award Residential. And his developments in the buildings he's done in the houses and communities that he has formulated are some of the best, if not the best, in the southeastern United States. We also have with us this morning consulting engineers, also some of the best in the southeastern United States, Teresa and Chad Apple. They're here to talk about stormwater traffic, either one. Made sure that I said her name first, because she insisted that I do so. Husband and wife team, very good engineers. Property that you're going to see on your monitors in just a minute has been kicked around, literally, for almost three decades. The reason for it is problematic, in that it's always been denominated as low-density residential on your future land use map. Scores of developers have made runs at it. Nothing serious enough to have gotten to a staff evaluated, set of circumstances. But as you can see, all the rooftops around in the area, this is one of the sole properties that remains undeveloped. And as you can see, it's the northwest intersection of Bell's Ferry Road and North Church Road. And as you can also see, it is located east of Interstate 575. So it's a critical piece of property, and is strategically located in terms of what Mr. Chapman proposes, is a rezoning from R 20 to non-supportive RSL for purposes of age-restricted, of course, single-family detached residences for a total number of 155. When we started the process, we were at 178 homes. Staff's recommendation for approval is actually based on 178 homes, which almost maxes out the density under RSL. In August, or actually in July, we changed that and reduced the density down to 161 homes. We're now at 155 homes. These were more design-driven reductions in density, as opposed to people requesting that we reduce density. But in any event, that is where we are now, at 155 homes. The homes themselves will be situated on lots. 79 of the lots will be 40 feet in width. 76 will be 50 feet in width, to give different stylistic approaches, price points in the community, and also for design criteria. As you can see, it's not what I call totally irregularly situated property, but it is configured in such a fashion, so it has triple road frontage, and that does pose some problematic aspects in terms of design. I guess quadruple road frontage, if you're looking at the interstate. While this application is impending, Madam Chairman, you've been kind enough to meet with us on several occasions. The District Commissioner has been very involved at every level of discussions. We've established what I think is, and I'll give Mr. Chapman credit for this. He has established one of the most meaningful dialogues with a civic group of any dialogue that I've been aware of in the years I've been doing this, and that's with the Bell's Ferry Civic Association. We've made dramatic changes in the proposal, not just the reduction in density, but a revised stipulation letter you received on August 17, revised architectural renderings and elevations, and you've got in the handout that I've given to you over 18 different examples of the homes and what they'll look like. We've totally refined, focused, and adopted a revised traffic study. This was continued for two months, not because of any lackadaisical nature on our part, but it was because we originally had an entrance on Bell's Ferry Road. It was what's called, and I would say common parlance, but nothing common about it. It was called a high-T intersection. The only one existing in Cobb that I'm aware of is at John Ward Road and Dallas Highway. But there's some problematic aspects of that in terms of its relative positioning to the interstate, also in terms of traffic circulation on Bell's Ferry, which is, of course, a major arterial. So we needed to continue this for two months, so we could get the data from the school district and make sure we had accurate traffic counts. And Amy Diaz and Ashley White have promised that. We've got Ms. Apple, who is here to speak to traffic and transportation issues. We've also submitted a letter of stipulations dated August 17, recently revised, not the stipulations as much as the site plan, which has minor tweaks to the point of ingress and egress, as you can see, on North Booth Road. And so we had to provide for a left-turn lane, for deceleration lanes, not only on North Booth, but going southward on Bell's Ferry Road as well, in terms of the deceleration lane. We are asking that this be specific or in substantial conformity to the site plan. Maximum of 155 homes. We would like the ability to be able to reduce that density further if we see for design reasons we need to do so. And we'd like the opportunity to be able to reposition homes within the community if we do, in fact, reduce density even further, so long as we don't increase the number of homes, so long as we don't create a variance, so long as we don't do anything in opposition to the ordinance. And of course, that is not just a unilateral ability for us. That would be subject to the minor provisions that you have for the District Commissioner. This is 155 age-restrictive, non-supportive, active adult homes, density of 4.3 units per acre. One of the main topics has been impervious surface. We agreed at the beginning that we have a max of 155, which is the max allowed under RSL. I provided each of you back on August 30, I believe, with the, and it's attached to the last page of the handout, a calculation and exhibit that shows we are now at 40% impervious surface. So we're 15% below the max, which we think is important to the Stormwater Management Division, but also important to the folks with whom we established a dialogue. We've got guest parking at 80 spaces. That was guest parking that was accommodated to 178 units. So we're way overparked under your guest parking, but if you can see, those are strategically and meaningfully positioned locations for guest parking. It's not just in one area, but it's throughout the subdivision to make it more amenable to the folks that live there. And as you can see, additional parking where the amenities are, the clubhouse and the pool, et cetera. We have a mandatory HOA, but this is a mandatory HOA. It has to be well-funded, because it has nine different things it's got to be responsible for. The maintenance and upkeep of fencing and landscaping, the private streets, which are built to the county standards, open space areas, sidewalks, community areas, stormwater attention and water quality, the entrance to the community, and of course, the amenities you see. So every single facet of any amenities or additions to this will be the responsibility of the HOA. The landscaping and screening on the frontages of the property and around the detention pond are going to be cryptomeria, a bore of IT, and other evergreen-type trees that I've spoken with your arborist about, and which he will approve. RSL requires around the perimeter of the property, we think a 10-foot landscape strip. We've doubled that to a 20-foot landscape buffer, a maintained buffer. We think it's important for our residents, but we also think it's important to maybe set the tone on how the future of RSLs are developed here on out. The subdivision entrance signs will be ground-based monument style. It'll be located there on North Booth Road. It'll be irrigated, lighted, and built consistent with the architectural style and composition, which you see. The water system, so we may have to do a sewer flow study. We may have to do a sewer capacity study. And we sure are going to have to have access utility easements within the streets. So they'll be able to get in there, because they're private streets built to the county standards. Stormwater management, we checked that box big time by reducing the impervious surface with specific exhibit with the calculations on that to show that at 40%. Our detention ponds are going to have to have elevated storage because of downstream considerations, including Lake Latimer, which is, if not, is on the cusp of being a regional detention facility downstream. It's two miles downstream, so we have the option of doing pre- and post-studies. But I think in abundance of caution and prudence, Mr. Chapman and his team will take care of that. We've got 28 seconds, Madam Chairman. If I could have an additional minute, because DOT considerations are really one of the linchpins of this. And we've agreed to all of DOT's recommendations. We've agreed to the stipulations, conditions, and recommendations contained in the traffic study and the synchronization files that were submitted by SEI. That's Teresa and Chad Apple, both engineers. DOT is looking for, and we've agreed to, the installation of a left-turn lane, as you can see within Booth Road or North Booth, 150-foot southbound deceleration lane, and at the sole point of interest, of course, a deceleration lane. Sidewalks, although not shown, there'll be five-foot sidewalks around the perimeter of the property. There'll be sidewalks within the subdivision. We show it on two. It's going to be on two, probably. But we'll agree to at least on one side, as DOT has recommended. We're voluntarily conveying 40 feet of right-of-way on North Booth, 50 feet of right-of-way. Well, let me just rephrase that. 40 feet from the center line of North Booth and 50 feet from the center line of Bell's Ferry. So we've also agreed to coordinate with the Georgia Department of Transportation with respect to any improvements to I 575. There are none on the table that I'm aware of. And we are asking for the granting of a concurrent variance, where you see in RSLs almost singularly, and that is a waiver to allow the distances between homes to be 10 feet as opposed to 15 feet, a five-foot deviation from that requirement. One last thing. Georgia Native Plant Society, GNPS, Sherri George heads that up. And she has asked for, and we've agreed for her, as you can see, the site was incredibly wooded, to do a plant rescue prior to the construction and build-out. We've got the usual minor mods in there for the District Commissioner. And with staff's recommendation for approval, with the work we've done with the BFCA and the Commissioner and Madam Chairman, we do ask that the application be approved as presented to you today. Thank you, Madam.
There wasn't any opposition. I'd like to, first of all, it's my case, and we've been working on it for several months, but I'd like to thank both sides, the applicant and the opposition, for the meetings. We had one as late as this past Friday. I'd like to thank DOT for coming at the last minute up to the meeting. So there've been some issues that we've been trying to work out, and it seems like that we've got those issues worked out. I would like for Ashley to come up. I think, Garvis, you covered it in your letter, but I was going to get DOT to come up and make sure that we didn't miss anything in the DOT, because we had emails going back and forth.
We did, yes. Ashley White with the Department of Transportation.
Go ahead and explain what the revised last DOT comment was, to make sure that we all understand that.
The last revised comments was for the left and right-turn lanes at their new entrance on North Booth Road, which they show on the site plan, and that's fine. And the traffic study also recommended a right-turn lane on Bell's Ferry Road. They're showing that. And the sidewalks external on both North Booth and Bell's Ferry Road. And that's, well, it's not shown on the site plan, but Garvis has said that they can do that. So all of our comments should be covered.
Okay. So you're happy with this revised?
We are.
All right. Thank you. The other comments that we had, I think stormwater now has been covered with the impervious surface down to the 40%, so I think we more than addressed that. surface down to the 40%, so I think we more than addressed that. Does anyone else have any comments before I make a recommendation?
I'll just say this plan looks far better than the one we saw a couple months ago.
It does.
Appreciate the applicant and the community working together.
They've really worked hard on this, and I think it's a good-looking plan, given that it's surrounded by roads. It was difficult, and now we have a good project going on here. Then in that, I would like to make a recommendation, y'all will just bear with me, I would like to make a recommendation that we approve this site plan, not to the plan, just approve the RSL, that we prove it subject to Garvis's letter of August 17th, 2018, with revisions, and those would have been the DOT revisions. Subject to all staff comments and recommendations were not in conflict. And I'm going to add just a couple of things to it. I'm going to add the heavy landscaping be on the berm with evergreens that would be next to the I-575. I'd like to also add that include the Bells Ferry Civic Association, a representative on the landscaping for the landscape plan. They wouldn't have the final say-so, but they would be included in on the, to see the revision, the final site, the approval would be up to the arborist. I'd also like to recommend that we add that the buildings be 15 feet apart instead of variance on the 10 feet. This was something we added on Friday, so I think that would give it a more, I looked at some of his other communities, and it seemed like he had more of a distance than the 10 feet between the structures. I know the ordinance calls for 15 feet, so I'd like to keep it at the 15 feet. And that would be the revised site plan that we have. And I don't think I've left out anything else. So that would be my motion.
I'll second for discussion.
I'll have a second for discussion.
Yeah. I don't have any discussion, but I have a feeling there will be.
Do you have any discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and second.
Madam.
All those in favor of the vote?
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Mad, say a comment before y'all cast your vote, please. The variance of 15 feet down to 10 feet is critical from an interior design perspective. Not all of them will be 10 feet, many of them will be 15 feet, but I would ask that allow us to work on that so we can get more specificity, but not carte blanche, just turn that variance down. It is critical to the deal, design-wise, and that's one of the reasons that you've seen a dramatic reduction in density from 178 to 155 in order to get it down as close as we could. So if there's a way you could leave it open-ended and not just shut that door, because it could be very well a deal killer for us.
I could actually bring it down where in the next two weeks with the applicant and the opposition, because it was their suggestion, and the district commissioner, and the next two weeks for the board commissioners, I could have y'all work on that.
Sure.
Perhaps come up with some kind of, I do think they might be a little bit in some places too close together, so I think I could take that out, and y'all work on that between, in the next two weeks, that 15 feet.
That would be great. There are, of course, that's a variance, and of course, a variance is you've got to show hardship, and that it doesn't set an adverse precedent, but if you'll allow us to continue our dialogue and leave that open, I guess, for the district commissioner, and I apologize for intervening of your motion, but that really is a huge, and the only variance we're taking.
Okay, because you realize that it still could end up being 15 feet, but I would give you the opposition and the applicant the chance to work on that for the next two weeks.
We won't start that dialogue this morning again.
Okay. All right, with that revision, that we're taking that out, and that the applicant and the opposition will work in the next two weeks, then that would be my motion.
And my second stands, and that exact discussion is why I thought we might have discussion.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion and second, all in favor? And that carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
And thank you, Bells Ferry.
Okay, rezoning case Z44, Trade Homes LLC, request rezoning from R-20 OSC and R-30 OSC to RSL non-supportive for the purpose of a residential senior living subdivision and landlots 195 and 196 of the 20th District. The property is located on the east side of Mars Hill Road, north of Stilesboro Road. The applicant's representatives present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z44? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the property owner and the applicant in this rezoning application, Trade Homes. This application was heard by the planning commission, was heard by you last month, and we gave a full presentation, and I'm sure you'll be grateful that I will not go through that again. But instead, try to focus on what we've done since that time, based on the comments that you as a planning commission provided to us, as well as comments we had received from those in the immediate area, adjacent neighbors in the Parkwood subdivision, as well as in the Brookstone Homeowners Association representatives that we spoke with and have met with extensively and shared these plans with, and so just for that, we're going to just update you on where we've been and where we've now sit in response to all of those comments. Again, this is almost a 40-acre tract located on Mars Hill Road, and if you recall, without me having to go through the whole history of it, this property is actually, as noted in your staff report, is entitled for 83 homes as a result of an R-20 and R-30 OSC plan that was ultimately approved in 2006 and '07 timeframe. And so that's where we, if you recall, that's what this property is currently zoned for, single-family subdivision of 83 homes. What we had proposed previously was a total maximum of 111 homes for residential senior living, RSL, and one of the things that we were asked to do is to review that and see if we could not reduce that proposed density or proposed number of homes, and we were able to do that as well. And let me go through those plan changes with you, show you that we were able to reduce that from 111 to a maximum of 95, which was the number of homes which were recommended as part of a comment to bring the actual density below 2.5 units per acre, so that places it right at 2.4 units per acre at 95 homes. And let me go through those other aspects of this site plan that were updated and revised.
Again, just to give you the context of the property, Mars Hill Road is here. Adjacent is the Parkwood subdivision, which is accessed, and that really comes in off of Stilesboro and Mars Hill, which this property sits just north of that, or just, yeah, just north of that intersection. Again, we have reduced the total number of homes to 95. The other comment that had been made, and this was one we were working on with the adjacent Parkwood subdivision, was to expand specifically the buffer area that is along this area of shared boundary. We were able to expand that buffer area, as well as take it out of the lots, and expand that from 20 to 30 feet of landscape buffer area in this location. Also, keep in mind that when you're looking at this particular area, we've had a lot of sensitivity with that, as well as with discussions with these adjacent property owners here in Parkwood. These lots here, that's actually the detention pond lots, that's where the detention pond for Parkwood is located, is right here on these. So it's these homes right here that have this aspect of buffer that was expanded for them here. We've also relocated the amenity to the front, which we think adds the ability to have, again, an expanded buffer for these homes here that are off a cul-de-sac, that have deep lots anyway. Also, we're able to then make sure we preserve a great deal of undisturbed open space, which is what this is providing for, except for we will have within that as Cobb County regulations and ordinances govern and provide for a system of walking trails through all of this area that will ultimately connect to the Cobb County park area that's now located to, adjacent to, and to the east of this property, that wraps almost this property across its entire rear boundary in this location here. We've also provided in concert with these residents that we'll work and coordinate with them on providing certain connection points to those walking trails so that they can more easily access what will ultimately hopefully be a grand system of walking trails and paths that run throughout the Cobb County open space and park area, that's a passive park area that will be enjoyed by all residents of the county. In addition, we did provide for guest parking. Originally, we had just over 20 spaces of guest parking that were congregated in the amenity area. Now we have a total of 43 guest parking spaces, so those have been doubled, and have provided for those parking spaces to be dispersed in various areas along the streets here and here, as well as through this area here. There's additional guest parking. Also, this plan takes into account a couple of additional large pocket parks or open space areas, one located here along the frontage, as well as another much larger area, about a 1.2-acre pocket park that's located here. What we've done with that is we were able to address not only the topography of the site, but also to provide for, similar to this particular street that comes through, now this street also has two breaking points that will be open space pocket park areas for residents to gather and enjoy, and it breaks up just the streetscape and provides for a sense of more openness amongst the community, as well as a place where park benches and those types of things can be utilized for gathering spaces, as I said, for the With that, wanted to, again, address also, we were asked to make sure that our road widths and turning radiuses were consistent with Cobb County Fire Marshal standards and DOT standards, which they are. The site plan just simply shows two roads with a standard cul-de-sac radiuses, so there is no issue whatsoever with access from an emergency services standpoint. Those were the items and comments that we were provided. We additionally added stipulations to our letter in response to the Brookstone Homeowners Association representative, and added additional stipulations that really were more about the sustainability and ensuring its consistency with the standard of excellence that Brookstone has, and certainly this Trade Homes subdivision will meet or exceed that standard of excellence. Again, we have attached and included within our stipulation letter the type of home that will be built, that will be age-restricted and meet all of the standards and requirements for RSL. The homes are beautiful, they're well-appointed, and will be excellent for this area. Our discussions and meetings with the adjoining residents, it was unanimous in their support of having RSL at this location as opposed to an 83-lot standard subdivision. The intersection of Mars Hill Road and Stilesboro Road, as I said, you can, a good pitcher can throw a baseball and hit that intersection from this property, not me, but a good pitcher. It's that close in proximity to that intersection. Any familiarity with West Cobb at all, you know that's a major intersection, that's the main entrance for Brookstone, and so traffic is of a major concern here. What we're able to do and what these adjoining residents in Parkwood, as well as the representatives from Brookstone Homeowners Association, saw very quickly was that simply building an 83-lot, single-family home subdivision as opposed to a 95-lot restricted, age-restricted RSL, that if you want to affect traffic in a positive way, that this is a no-brainer from a land use standpoint, especially given that we're only, what, 12 homes above what this is zoned for today, but we're age-restricted in a community that's going to be designed specifically for that market, which, as we've all come to learn through this process from a traffic perspective, does affect traffic in a positive way when compared to single-family home subdivisions. Basically, it's less than half the impact, and certainly, we agree with that here. With those additional stipulations with this revised plan, we think we've met and exceeded every comment that's been provided to us from both you as a planning commission and from our surrounding neighbors and adjoining residents to effect what we think is a great plan with a fantastic builder in tow. So with that, we respectfully request your recommendation for approval with our revised letter dated August 28th, which incorporates all of the items that are on this revised site plan, as well as the additional items that have been requested by us. Thank you.
Was there any opposition to this application? Hearing and seeing an aspect of this bonus with the Skip's case.
Okay, yeah, this is my case. First thing I'd like to do is I'd like to thank Kevin and the community, community's not represented here today, but maybe some people are watching on TV, for doing another great job in taking what was initially a contentious case and bringing together everybody, making changes so that the end result is something that is an easy, I think, an easy approval. The big issue, the one remaining big issue here is the future land use map, which designates this parcel as very low-density residential. We know that the RSL ordinance does not allow for an RSL to be in a very low-density future land use map category. However, the mitigating circumstance here is that with the acquisition of the park next door, and we talked about this last month, that left this remaining parcel, which is part of an approved 83-lot plan. The density of that is higher than would be allowed under very low-density residential, so one would think that that would force eventually the changing, the change of the future land use map to bring this down to low-density residential or something else other than VLDR. So having done that, expecting that that would be a change in the future, there's no technical reason or any other reason why an RSL should not be here. To me, the biggest issue is the impact on, the positive impact on traffic, which Kevin just mentioned. I think that when you compare, I know that Ashley White has statistics to show this, and she was ready last time too, but I'm just going to short-circuit that since we don't need to go into the details. The traffic that would be offered by an 83-lot, single-family residential development in this parcel compared to a 95-lot RSL, Kevin said was less than half, it's more like a third, and that's a huge, huge positive impact on this part of West Cobb, which has a lot of traffic up and down Mars Hill Road. So having said all that, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm ready to make a motion that we recommend approval of Z44, subject to the letter stipulations dated August 28th to the zoning department, the site plan dated August 28th received by the zoning department. All staff comments, not otherwise in conflict. Two changes to the stipulation letter on paragraph 8A, it says no more than 10% of the homes may be leased, and I want to add in, add in, or rented at any one time. And then paragraph 8B, all landscaping and landscaping maintenance of common areas, buffer areas, open space areas, and I want to add in detention ponds and exterior yard areas around the residence that shall be performed by Mandatory Homeowners Association. So those are the two changes there, and then finally, I want to add in a stipulation on the construction hours that, just to protect the residents around there, the construction hours should be restricted to Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and no work on Sundays or holidays. I've checked with, I talked to Kevin about all of those changes, and he's in agreement with them, I believe.
Okay.
So that's my motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a second. Would you consider this for consent agenda?
Absolutely, good, good thought, Matt. Once again, Kevin, thank you for what you've done here, because we've got, this is the second or third case, that in recent, over the last year, that we've been able to go from a fair amount of opposition to something that's potentially on the VOC consent agenda. So I would like to add that.
Okay, we have a motion and second, all those in favor? And that approves four to zero. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, rezoning case C49, KO Management Incorporated, request rezoning from NRC to RA5 for the purpose of a single-family residential community and landlot 37 of the 17th District. The property is located The property is located in landlot 39 of the 18th District also. Property is located at the northwest intersection of Mableton Parkway and Wood Valley Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z49? The director show is one person opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning.
Good morning.
For the record, my name is Parks Huff of the law firm of San Delarken Huff and Valley, and I represent KO Management in relation to this rezoning request that's before you this morning. The property that is shown up on your aerial photograph right there, it's very important to understand the current zoning of the property and its relationship to other properties in the area. This property is zoned neighborhood retail commercial at the present time. In fact, I think, I think that this was an update that was caught by Mableton Improvement Coalition, it was showing up, is still zoned residential only a short while ago, but it was zoned, I think about eight years ago to NRC. You can see general commercial across the street and up and down, but if you slide down, you'll see the intersection to our north is Veterans Memorial, is Mableton, go the other way. The intersection to the north. To the north, you can see that's the major intersection, is Veterans Memorial Parkway and Mableton Parkway, and that's where the commercial center should be, and so this has been zoned many years, and my client has owned it for many years, and it's zoned NRC, but they believe that residential is a better use of the property, given its location, and so they propose the rezoning to the RA5 zoning category for a single-family detached product. As you know, there was a similar zoning request just to the north of us that had quite a bit of opposition and concern from the community with an attached product, and so that's the reason why I went with the detached product. If I can show the site plan, that this is a subject property, you can see the land use plan, although the property is zoned NRC, the land use plan has it medium-density residential, which the proposal is consistent with that, and the reason why staff recommends approval. This is a site plan which is coming in off Wood Valley Road, no direct access onto Mableton Parkway. There's some significant public improvements that's related to this development. Number one, we will be donating significant right-of-way along Mableton Parkway. Cobb County DOT has a plan for a multi-use path along Mableton Parkway, and so we will be able to make that more of a reality with the right-of-way being available for that additional improvement. Also, Wood Valley Road is extremely substandard at the present time, not only does it not have sidewalks, it doesn't have proper width, so we will have, be having to improve the width, the current width of Wood Valley Road, and donate the sufficient right-of-way and add the sidewalks along there, and then it's just a standard cul-de-sac street with 10 homes off of it. One of the challenges is that we have is the fire department has added a regulation within, in the development regulations relating to guest parking, and so we have five guest parking shown on the site plan. This DOT does not like them as nose-in spaces, and so my engineer has informed me that what the alternative proposal on this would be to widen the street, and we can get five guest parking spaces along the street, and this works very well in this layout, and we can simply have the widened street section, allow guest parking or parking on one side of the street, and with the long distance between the driveways where that detention pond is, it gives plenty, it gives five spaces right there immediately. I know there are still concerns about making sure that our driveways are separated from the sidewalks, and my engineer needs to provide that data. We know that we need to provide parking beyond the sidewalks, and we are committed to doing that. The setbacks from Mableton Parkway shown is 40 feet, and Mableton Improvement Coalition has questions and concerns about making sure that the visibility along there, and we even adopted their recommendation for approval. The conditions that they included, which has a landscape committee so that there's be fencing and landscaping along Mableton Parkway, so that the view along Mableton Parkway is attractive, we certainly agree with that, so we'll be working with them on that issue. We do have some representative pictures of the architecture that would be proposed there, and we have a fencing detail that we have showed that would be along the back, and I understand Mableton Improvement Coalition does not like this fence, and we will work with them on that. I think that what they would like to see would be some, you know, brick piers or rock piers, columns rather, that would, you know, interspace in there and also include, increase the landscaping in there, so we'll be working on that. So, you know, we believe that this use of the property is appropriate, within the medium-density residential, future land use category, this is a medium-density use. The fact that the community is not here in opposition like the attached product that was proposed just north of this site is very telling, and, you know, we have significant public improvements that are included with this site plan, and so that is very critical to my client, because he's got to pay for those improvements that are public improvements, Wood Valley improvements, donations of right-of-way on both road frontages, as long, as well as the improvements that will have to be done with the development, putting in the road, the detention pond, everything. So spreading that cost among the 10 lots is a challenge, and I know that we need to provide a little more detail on the separation of our parking from the sidewalk and ensuring that we provide adequate parking, but I think we can do it, it's just going to take some, a little bit of work from the engineer. So I appreciate your time. I'm here to answer any questions that you have regarding the application. We ask that you approve it, subject to my letter dated August 29th, and follow your staff recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Parks. We'll hear from the opposition.
Good morning and thank you. My name is Robin Meyer. I'm the chairman of the board of the Mableton Improvement Coalition, and I first off want to say that we support wholeheartedly the idea of this residential development on this parcel, but we're concerned about some of the details. We think absolutely that single-family, a single-family detached development is appropriate here, but we would like a little bit more time, if you guys are willing, to work out some of the details. As Mr. Huff relayed, there are a number of items about the site plan that need to be reworked, from parking to the impact of the right-of-way donation on Mableton Improvement, I'm sorry, on Mableton Parkway, the impact on the size of the lots, and also the architecture. When we wrote our letter to you, we had, only in the, in the couple of hours before that, received a copy of the proposed architecture, which candidly is a little tall for this particular location. The existing neighborhood around this property is by and large one-story, mid-century, shall we say, but at least a 60s and 70s source of architecture. So something that looks a little bit more story and a half-ish would fit better in this location, but mostly we just like time to work through that. The, probably the most important issue, as Mr. Huff alluded to, is the relationship between these homes and Mableton Parkway, how these homes will be sheltered and buffered from Mableton Parkway, which is a state highway, it's not a small road, and how the, how the public going up and down Mableton Parkway will be, in all candor, sheltered from their backyards. I think all of us have a backyard, not all of us have a beautiful backyard. So if, what we would appreciate most, mostly is another 30 days to work through some of these issues, but if you should see fit to move this, this application forward today, we would ask that you include a site plan review committee in addition to the other stipulations that would provide the community with an opportunity to be involved in, in the development of that site plan. I think it is interesting, it is of note that the neighbors who were so adamantly opposed to the previous residential development, the townhouse development, are not here today. Informally, we've spoken to them, and they are very happy to see new single-family homes come to their neighborhood. There is, there is a lot of interest in Mableton in revitalization, and candidly, this is, this is the first hopeful proposal we have seen in this, in this little corridor. I was personally involved for Mableton Improvement Coalition many years ago when this was zoned commercial. It never made sense to me at the time, but those were different times, and everybody, everybody with a corner seemed to think that there was a business opportunity to be had. I think the fact that this has sat for that entire period of time, the grave recession notwithstanding, speaks to the fact that this does not make sense as another commercial outpost. Mableton is, is, has tons and tons and tons of properties, zoned commercial, land use planned commercial, that's available for development and redevelopment at any given moment. So I think the marketplace has spoken, and this should definitely be residential. So as I say, we support this in, in concept, hope we have a little bit more time to work through the details. Thank you.
Respect to this point and got it.
Thank you, Judy. Well, I think I can echo most of those comments that were just made, and I think Parks echoed a lot of them. One of the, there's a couple of issues I'm going to call DOT up for.
Ashley White with the Department of Transportation.
Yes, and I didn't run this by you before the meeting, so hopefully you're prepared. If not, I'll understand. In the stipulation letter, there's a indication that they'll, you know, donate sufficient right-of-way within reason along Mableton Parkway to accommodate the multi-use trail. The donation that you've already asked for, does that provide enough room for the multi-use trail? You don't need more than what you're asking for in your comments, do you?
I don't, I don't believe so. Usually the multi-use trails are between 10 and 12 feet. I can't see exactly what's, what's shown on this site plan, but 50 feet from center line should be sufficient enough to encompass that trail.
Okay, so that's hopefully a detail we can work out in the next month, just to make sure, that way we don't have something in the stip letter that kind of says, well, we may give it to you, we may not. Like to know if we need more than 50 feet, we want to know how much, and then we can accommodate for it.
Right, and when they get to plan review, we'll have them coordinate with the project manager for that project, and kind of make sure everything is lined up correctly.
But, but it affects everything on the site plan, so we kind of want to know that we're getting enough land, they can coordinate the rest, but we'd like to know.
Right, I'm not sure where we are with those plans, but generally 50 feet should be enough for a 10 or 12-foot multi-use trail.
Okay, well, if you guys can work on that for us, I'd appreciate it so that we know one way or the other. Just make sure there's enough room there to accommodate it, you know, between the road and the new property line.
Right.
And if not, let's get what we need. The second thing was, I saw your comments on driveway lengths, and I think that's very important on these projects.
Yeah, we like to see 20 feet of length from the back of curb, just so a car can fit in that space without obstructing a sidewalk.
Is it from the back of curb?
That's from back of curb.
Or, I thought it had said right-of-way in your comments.
No, it should say back of curb.
I may misread it. Because a concern is 20 feet from back of curb means you're probably going to block sidewalks parking cars. Because the garage stall space is about 12 feet.
It may be right-of-way. Yeah, we just want to make sure that there's enough driveway length so that they don't impede the sidewalk.
Right, that's, that's, I just wanted to bring that up because it's, some of these probably look like they're about 10 feet from right-of-way or something.
Right, I know the first couple of lots, the driveway lengths, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how long they are, but I know they're not 20 feet, so.
Okay, and Parks already addressed the head-in parking versus that, so we'll get that taken care of, and then the other thing is you want all the driveways 50 feet from the Wood Valley Road.
All of the guest parking, so that first guest parking area with the three spaces, that's a little too close to Wood Valley, so we'd like them to be at least 50 feet.
How about the driveway on, which really lot 10, which you might see as lot 1?
That one's close as well. We generally like to see 50 feet for the driveways. I'm not sure how much room they have there, because they're pretty close to that property line, but if they can shift that as far to the property line as they can, that would be great.
Okay, but you guys sometimes make accommodations when that's less than 50.
Right, we do, we do.
Okay, because I want to, that worried me, they may have to lose a lot just to get 50 feet away.
Exactly, yeah, as long as they can shift it as far to that property line, we kind of work with them with that.
Okay, okay. Anybody else have questions for DOT? Thank you. Okay, with that said, I, I think we do need to work on driveway lengths on some of these, and, yeah, I think they may have to lose a lot. I'll let them lay it out and figure it out, but some of these driveways are very short to where, you know, it may be not even have 20 feet from back of curb, let alone what you'd be parking across the sidewalks in, so they may have to lose like lot 1 and push that whole street a little farther away from Mableton Parkway, but I'll leave that for them to, to figure out, but I think we do need to get to the 20 feet from, from right-of-way on those driveways, if these are larger homes, likely to have people parking in driveways, and we don't want sidewalks blocked. Let's see, I do agree with the thought on, on the elevations, and one thing I had asked for, but we haven't received yet, is kind of what the properties would look like from the back, because these two-story properties, especially when you have your multi-use trail that's going to go right by the property, we want to make sure it looks nice from Mableton Parkway, and so we probably, if it's going to be a two-story product, probably need some architecture on it to, to make it look better, or the story and a half usually provides some of that, lessens the appeal, much like we see in many of the RSLs. So I do think we need some work there, so we need some site plan work, the driveways, the parallel parking that was discussed. You know, something, a better-looking fence along Mableton Parkway, probably with the brick columns and, and then heavy landscaping in front of it, and I'd probably also say no accessory structures, just because they tend to look ugly and people put them above the fence. But with that, I think we're not really ready to move this forward, so I'm going to make a motion that we hold this till our October hearing.
We have a motion second for a hold, all those in favor? That carries 4 to 0. Yay. John, what's our next case?
Moving into land use permits on the continued agenda, LUP 9, Cecile Ferguson, request a land use permit for the purpose of backyard chickens poultry in landlot 344 of the 16th District. Property is located on the south side of Blackwell Road, West Knight Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 9? The director shows no one opposed.
Before I, before I actually start, I have a quick question for you. I want to be clear in my presentation. The last time I was here, back in June, I was a little confused, given the instructions I received from zoning, so my, my preparation was sort of out of whack, so I want to make sure, what is it that you want from me today for this hearing? Someone was supposed to visit with me from planning, and that never happened, so just to, I guess, walk through my property, and so I just want to be clear.
Well, actually, it was me, and I did come out, you weren't at home.
Oh, no.
Suck him out twice. Came out again yesterday, too.
Oh, no.
What you would have to do today is, because you're asking for chickens, and your presentation should be addressed on just your chickens and what you're proposing. should be addressed on just your chickens and what you're proposing for that.
Okay. All right.
Whereas before, you had a variance, and so the only thing we could listen to was a setback for a building. I think that's the difference that we're talking about. But today, you can talk about your chickens.
Okay. And my motivation for it?
Yes. You most definitely can.
Okay.
Remembering that you have 10 minutes.
Okay.
Starting right.
All right, let me see if I can work this. Okay. My name is Cecile Ferguson. I reside at 1632 Blackwell Road, Marietta, zip code 30066. I've resided in my community for more than 14 years, before this board today, because I have petitioned the city for land use permit for backyard poultry, no roosters. My motivating factor is my son, age 10, diagnosed with autism. With the diagnosis of autism came other challenges in common with the ASD, and that is ADHD, combined chronic severe anxiety, OCD, sensory processing disorder. And so during the past five years, my son participated in various therapy sessions from twice a week up to four times a week, every week. And those therapy sessions include speech, occupational therapy, ABA, which is behavioral social skills, therapy sessions. Okay, it's there. I'm forgiving, but I have to turn my back. I don't have my copy, so I'm going to read directly from here. So this, I wanted to share this letter because I use this for traveling, but it validates or and or authenticates the diagnosis of my son, so I'm just not throwing anything out there. This is from one of my son's pediatrician. I am one of the pediatrician who sees Josiah Young in our pediatric office. Please be informed that Josiah has autism. His medical condition impairs his ability to communicate and/or interact with others, i.e. direct eye contact. As a result, he may have difficulty understanding your directions and may not be able to respond to your questions. He may also become physically agitated if he's touched by a stranger or if a stranger moves too close to him. Due to his hypersensitivity, unfamiliar noises, smells, and a multitude of strangers, especially when traveling, and various other sensory input can trigger a meltdown. Please do not interpret his behavior as a refusal to cooperate. He is not intentionally defying your instructions. Please seek instruction slash help with his parents slash guardian and/or his therapist who may be accompanying him. And I did need this lesson, I'm sorry, this letter, for travel purposes, but it gives you the gist of my son's eye dose diagnoses. Okay. So through research, I came across an article published by The Guardian Liberty Voice, an online news source. It stated that children with autism may benefit from spending time with animals, whether the animals are part of a formalized animal therapy program, farm animals, or family pets. I also learned from the same article that the presence of an animal can help a child to focus and provides an opportunity for interaction that is soothing to the perpetually overstimulated synapses with an autistic child's brain. In that very same article, it stated that autistic children have difficulty relating to people, but put them in a field and give them some space, and they will flourish. I'm not going to go through all the definitions, but I will say this. An animal assisted therapy program, which is located in Colorado State, on their website's homepage, individuals on the spectrum may have challenges in the following areas: social skills, and I'm not going to go through all of that, communication skills, behavior, which is, I will say this, encompassing preoccupation with one or more stereotyped and restricted patterns of interest that is abnormal, either in intensity or focus. So farm animals can help with emotional awareness and regulation. And that is what I am, that's the primary focus and my motivation for this level of change and/or project, if you will, with my son. We're moving now, at age 10, into self-regulation to get, so that I am not his cue for everything to bring to his memory. So this helps. Farm animals help with behavioral management skills and behavioral improvements, skill acquisition, communication skills, gross and fine motor, caretaking. Farm animals can help with appropriate social interaction and feedback in regards to social skills, assertiveness, but most of all, it can be fun and engaging for special needs children. In addition, studies have found that an autistic child's interaction with animals enable them to have an increase in socially appropriate behavior, show fewer autistic behaviors such as hand flapping, which my son does, humming, spinning objects, jumping, and there are other things that he does as well. They were less easily distracted and were more likely to engage in conversation and discussion about the animal. And finally, in sessions with children with autism, therapists discovered that farm animals can provoke attention and engagement, reinforce task acquisition and completion, stimulate conversation and social interaction, and provide opportunities for sensory integrations. So what I wanted to show, the amount of space that I need is really minimal. I believe my property size is more than adequate to accompany this, to help me with this project. These are just examples of people with their, you know, their backyard chickens. They're almost like dollhouses with a little fence or cage around them. And these are other, I'm just giving you images of shelter, that sort of thing. So this is something that is actually at Home Depot that I'm considering. 10 by 6 by 8 metal shed that I will reconfigure to house the chickens, once approved by this board. And it is actually much larger than most, so it's more than adequate for, I think, my property. And please note that I have, I am in compliance with all that have been asked of me, from dealing with my neighbors, sending out letters to everywhere within the 1,000 feet. I've actually had phone calls from neighbors who cannot understand why I'm even going through this process, and almost encouraged by some to just move ahead without it. But I want to comply and do what I'm instructed or what is required of me by law. And that's it.
Okay. Before you step in, you want to tell us briefly about your chickens?
I wanted to have another, besides the therapy for my son, it's also great to just be able to have the chickens and have eggs. It is both. My property and what I want to do as a whole, as I started in my last presentation before the board, is basically have a permaculture landscape, if you will. That includes the chicken and everything else that I'm trying to do. An edible landscape, more or less a backyard farm. The chickens themselves are American heritage chicken for egg laying. They're kid-friendly, if you will. I can only acquire them at this time of year as baby chicks. The amount that I was considering would be maybe up to six, if I am allowed to do that. Definitely no more than 10. So I wanted to do the barred rock, great egg layer, the white-leg horn, great egg layer. These are docile, no roosters, and just friendly and good for, I believe, interaction with my son.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
All right. Hearing and seeing no opposition, it's back to this board, and this would be my case. And you can have a seat if you like.
Oh, thank you.
Sure. Here you go. Let me begin the conversation, and then anyone else has any. These are always challenging cases for us, when we have the livestock, or the chickens, or the poultry. The ordinance does say that they really need to be on a farm. And while I think your presentation, and I think your son's incredibly lucky to have you as his mom, thinking of ways that you can deal with this autism. And it is something that we do, we've had cases up here before about the effects. However, there's also negative things. While there's no one here in opposition, I did receive several emails that was opposed to the chickens, and afraid that other things would be coming in besides just the chickens. But the only thing before us is just the chickens. This, the ordinance would only allow you to have six chickens, not 10, but six, because of the size of your lot. I think that any time that you have chickens, chickens are noisy. Chickens smell, and chickens do have a habit of bringing in snakes come too, and I'm sure you're aware of all this, that it does create a little bit of a problem there. And you would have to clear off a little area. And I know you have thought this all out of where your chickens would go, and I think in our last presentation, not this one, you were going to grow some vegetables and some stuff like that, so. So your intentions are well put. I just think that sometimes that perhaps that this might not be the right direction at this time to go in with the chickens. I think maybe something smaller for your son to take care of might be more appropriate. Those are just my comments, and if the board would like to make some comments, I'd like to hear any other opinions from the board.
I'd like to. I was just a little concerned. I didn't see anything directly from the contiguous neighbors.
Right.
I don't know whether the emails were from the contiguous neighbors, but we asked for a petition, so to speak, from the contiguous neighbors, and we've got petitions that have the signatures of neighbors further away, but I'm concerned about the neighbors that are directly contiguous to your property. And I don't think we have anything.
No, we don't.
Just come up and give it to the clerks over here. That would be funny. Is that any other thing?
No, that's.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to know what you're giving the clerk right now. Are those the immediately contiguous neighbors?
Yes, yes. That was one of the first, that was actually one of the first application when I went through the process before. I got a call two weeks later after going through the initial process, all was well, and I was told that I needed to touch all the neighbors touching my property, that I had to get their signature, which I did. They have absolutely no problem. As a matter of fact, I have neighbors that has, actually, has chickens and roosters. So I don't know if they went through this process or not, but.
But those are the immediately contiguous. That's all I need to know.
These are the, right. These are the immediate neighbors touching my property. I walked through them. As you will see, Karen, Karen mentioned no roosters. As long as I had no roosters, she was just fine. And I told her there would be no roosters. And like I said, there are neighbors in my property, in my community with chickens, and their coops can literally fit in my master closet. So you're only talking 100 square feet to 200 square feet, if not less than that, for what I am asking of the, this board. And if I can just put this up.
No, that's enough.
Okay, that's enough.
You answered my question.
Okay, thank you.
Let me give you this. That goes to the clerk, right?
Tim, could we put the house numbers on the GIS?
From that piece of paper?
Thank you.
Yeah, she just took it away.
Just to see what the house numbers are all around the property.
Are they in the book?
Do you have a question, Dan?
Well, I was just going to say, the, a copy of the signatures are in the book on page 187 with the house number.
So these are the contiguous. Okay, okay. Good. Thank you, Tim.
Thanks.
They're on either side of the.
Right.
Do I need that?
No.
No, you're good. Thank you.
I just didn't know what the house numbers were on either side.
And Tim, could you put the picture back up of the one just before there, if you would? The GIS, yeah, Tim.
I'll say, for me, it makes a difference that these contiguous neighbors have signed off on the petition. The one to the rear didn't, which she may not have realized to go to the rear and get. Oh, they did? Oh, there's another page? Okay. 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 That makes a big difference to me.
Yeah, me too.
Because they, that, you know, even though the code allows six, six may be a little too many because of the long, narrow lot.
I think.
And that, but I'll leave that.
I think for me, for me, I think the chickens might be too much, period. I think chickens probably should be in on farmland. I realize it's just .70, but for me, the chickens would not be the best route. I'd like to see, start off with some kind of smaller animals, something that he could take care of. There's pets, there's dogs, cats, and other things besides just a chicken. But chicken is a very, six chickens would be very time-consuming and a lot of work, actually. But so my recommendation would be to deny this request at this time. So I would like to make a motion that we reject the application for chickens. Do I have a second? Hearing and seeing no.
I'll second that for discussion. I just, may I speak?
Sure.
Yeah. I agree with you that every time we've had a chicken case come before us, we've done a lot of hand wringing, and it's just, it's a difficult decision to make. Because on the one hand, I think we all recognize that having chickens is potentially a good thing for many reasons, but on the other hand, they're a nuisance for a lot of people. And when you're in a neighborhood where the lots are relatively small, and here the houses are close together because of the shape of the lots, it makes it even more difficult to justify having chickens. So I'm impressed with the fact that the immediate neighbors are supportive of this, but I still am not sure that I think it's the right thing. I think I agree with you.
Can I say something? No, ma'am. The hearing's closed. There's some other issues, as we know, besides just a chicken, and some of the other things I believe that they're asking to go in here that would constitute more of a farm-type environment. And I think this is, as we clearly can see, is a residential-type development, not a farm-type development. So any other discussion? No, Gault.
I hit the wrong button there. Clear that, but I think six chickens, even though that would be the max the code allows, is too many given the shape of the lot and the way it is going to flow next to the neighbors. But I would probably support something with a smaller number. But I also know, I do worry about, you know, some of the other animals there as well.
I concur with Gault. I think also that the back of this property is a sanitary sewer accretment, which may justify reducing the effective size of the lot, and therefore the number of chickens. And then, isn't, is this, excuse my ignorance again, is this for a specific time period, or is this?
We could put a time, because it's a land use permit, we could put a time period on it.
I would support what Gault said, maybe five chickens, four or five chickens, whichever, pick a number, for no more than a year, just to make sure that this did work out for her son, and she didn't, you know, have some of that wasn't working there for a long period of time.
All right.
Yeah, just one additional thing. I'm not a medical doctor, and I don't. I'm not a medical doctor, and I don't really know that much about autism. But I'm struck by a comment that you made, Judy, that there may be other ways to deal with autism with animals than simply chickens. And, and so, you know, that, that point sticks with me.
Well, me too, because I think there are a lot of programs out there for autistic, autistic. And I see that there's riding stables, that where the children can go to the riding stables. There's other opportunities. And I just think that maybe perhaps the chicken with the other things that come with the chicken might not be the best avenue. So, having said all that, we have a motion and a second. I'm going to call the question for rejection. Okay, so we have a tie vote.
Do you want to send it forward without a recommendation?
Yeah, you can either hold it, continue it, or send it to the BOC without a recommendation.
Okay, I think we're going to send it to the Board of Commissioners without a recommendation, since it's, I don't think it would change in the meantime. So, we're going to, it hasn't been approved, but we're going to go ahead and send it to the Board of Commissioners at a two-two vote. So, at the Board of Commissioners meeting, then you would make your presentation again, and then talk to them about the chicken. And one of the things I might suggest when you come back for the Board of Commissioners meeting is maybe perhaps have a picture of where you're going to place your chicken coop in your backyard, not just pictures of other people's chicken coops, but where you are going to be a one, and where it's going to be in your backyard, and show us your backyard. That might help your cause a little bit, too. So, and it might even help if you have your neighbors, your adjacent property owners come with you to the meeting, too. So. Okay. Thank you very much. Yes. So, it goes, we don't have to do another vote, do we? No. No, it just goes. All right, so John, we're ready for the next. And thank you very much. It was a good presentation. Yes.
Okay, resoning case Z54, Gregory A. King, request rezoning from GC to NRC for the purpose of retail in Land Lot 47 of the 18th District. The property is located on the south side of Veterans Memorial Highway across from Templebrook Road. Is the applicant present? Let's direct show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed, rezoning case Z54? Let's direct show there's two people opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good morning, I'm Greg King. I'm the owner. I am applying to change it from GC to NRC to attract a retail business. It's currently under renovation by me, and I do have pictures as of yesterday of the status of it. And I can answer any questions you have.
Lori Holman says this all the time. You have 10 minutes to make your presentation.
Yes, ma'am. That's my presentation.
So, tell us all that you can tell us about this application.
I currently have a building permit pulled to renovate the business. I have started to clear the landscape or improve the landscape. I will apply or I will comply with all code required.
Do you want to show us your pictures that you have?
Now, am I correct to say GC exists on it now? Okay. Because I was told I had to reestablish zoning due to a vacancy, due to it being vacant.
Yeah, you've lost your grandfathering.
That's what I thought.
GC. You just can't use it.
So, I can't attract a GC compliant?
No, you can't put a tenant in there.
Yeah.
Because you lost the grandfathering. But it's technically still zone GC. Is that correct, John? Yeah.
So, to clarify, I can't put anybody in there under any circumstances.
Right.
Okay.
That's correct. Tell you rezon it.
What I have is the paint color picked out, another of the side of the building, front side. That's the back wall that's going to be pressure washed and painted. That's the right, left side wall. That is a picture from the right front. The color representation you may see on that front column where the fence meets the building.
Okay, that's, that's right there is the color. Okay.
Yeah. You can kind of see some of the landscaping's already been cleared, trying to keep the debris away. And that's a kind of a, the paint sample showing a little bit of the back left yard. And same thing.
Okay. Are you showing us the above, up there, or the below, the?
That is the above grade or the road front gradage. The back is a basement storage area.
I meant the color that you're trying to show us. So, you're showing us the one that's more gray?
Yes, the one that's more gray.
Okay.
Yeah, the front was painted at the top, kind of a whitish color.
Okay. I think that would be a nice color on it, kind of neutral.
The whole, the whole building will be painted, that from the, from that front top awning, underneath the awning as well.
He just recently bought it, right?
It's been vacant for years, and addressing the overgrowth and getting the building up to code is my concern.
Okay.
Anything else you'd like to add? Any proposed use for the building, or?
There'll be no additional structures to it, no additional paving, nothing's going to be stored there. It's, I want to attract a retail or storefront to support the neighborhood.
Okay, so you don't know exactly what's going to go in there?
No.
You just want to fix it up, make it pretty?
Exactly.
And improve it?
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing the same none? Hearing's closed. Was any opposition to this?
There is.
Let the opposition speak. So, you can have a seat.
Okay, thank you.
The opposition will come up.
Good morning, Ms. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Ray Thomas, and I am the Vice Chair of the Mayberton Improvement Coalition, as well as Chair of Legacy of the River Line, which is located not too far from Mr. King's property. First of all, on behalf of the Mayberton Improvement Coalition, I want to state that we are in support of this, with this application, rezoning from GC to NRC. However, there are, this support is conditioned on several stipulations dated in our letter of August 29, 2018, to the, to the Planning Commission and others. I won't go over all of the conditions that we stipulated in our letter. However, I will emphasize a few points. Number one, we certainly appreciate the applicant buying this vacant building that has been vacant for many years. And I've spoken over the phone with Mr. King, and he's been very cooperative in trying to put together a plan to improve the property. Naturally, in these cases, we like to see renderings of what the, what the property's going to look like in the future. But as Mr. King indicated in his presentation, as of right now, he doesn't exactly know what's going to, what's going to go in there. But we certainly appreciate the, his willingness to, to make improvements in order to attract a client. Several conditions that we would like to propose, and ask that they be adopted in relationship to this particular application. Number one, if there are any dumpsters, or if a dumpster is needed, that that dumpster be enclosed. We also recommend that the, the property, as it is improved, that it be improved in accordance with the Veterans Memorial Highway Design Guidelines, which were approved by the county last year. I sent a copy to Mr. King and highlighted a few things to him. In addition to that, we also recommend that no outside storage or, or display be, be placed on a property among the prohibitive uses, and particularly that auto sales, auto parts sales, new and used tire sales, or vehicle repair businesses be strictly prohibited from this property, among the other prohibitive uses that we recommend in our letter. One thing that was omitted in the letter that I'd like to also expound on is parking and the parking lot. As you can see by the pictures that Mr. King presented, the parking lot is a combination of gravel and, and, and grass. And so, we're, we're proposing this morning that the parking lot be paved, and in addition to being paved, also be striped, and that the number of spots be in accordance with whatever is allowed by the county or county code. We are okay with the proposed setback being reduced from 50 to 30 feet. And so, these are the conditions that we are proposing be stipulated with this, with this application, if it's approved. In closing, again, I'd like to thank the applicant for investing in our community. Again, this building has been sitting there for quite some time, and so we appreciate the willingness to, to invest in the community, and also the willingness to talk and cooperate with us as this property is built out. That's all I have. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Back to this ordinance, Galt.
Okay, thank you. One, one important item on this zoning I want to point out is, and it doesn't show up as apparent on the GIS that we're looking at, but this, people drive very fast along Veterans Memorial, and it's kind of blind when you come around here. Looking at this map, it appears to have more sightline than it does, partly because the trees come all the way up to the, to the road or to the right of way. And DOT's asked upon redevelopment some changes to that, but I don't think they've asked for anything right now, so that, you know, and that would be very expensive for the applicant on this small building to go put in D cell lane and all those kinds of things for, for this. But at the same time, that limits some of the uses we're going to want to see go in there because of the visibility and the turning in and out. Also, the applicant's hoping if he attracts a professional office kind of use, that he won't have to have a dumpster, that he can just get the rolling trash cans, much like residential. And I think that would be fine, but we just want to make sure that they aren't picked up from the right of way, that the trash truck actually turns into the property to pick those up, just because it would be very dangerous to have a trash truck stop there. Let's see here. You know, I think one of the things an applicant shared with me, he really bought this for the value of the property more than the existing building. You know, he hopes to lease the building for some time until somebody wants to redevelop the property and makes him a rich man by, by buying it. So, you know, that, that's kind of his motivation, so he doesn't want to put a lot of money into it. Now, for the small building, I think there is enough paved area up along the Veterans Memorial right of way, you know, up in front of the building to put in the parking that's required by code. He might have to add a little bit of paving, I don't know. You know, one of the things he'll do, but, but I don't see him needing to pave the rear, but that also means you can't park any vehicles in the rear, because all parking has to be on a hardened surface. And we can see previous owner had semi trucks and things like that there that weren't really supposed to be there. I think we covered that, just kind of going along. I think the color he showed today would be fine. I'll just put if it's going to be a different color, the district commissioner would approve it. Does anybody have any discussion on this one, or I'll go ahead and make a motion?
Go ahead.
Okay. Make motion to recommend approval of Z54, subject to all the following. All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. Site plan received July 25, 2018, with addition of a parking plan per staff comments. Landscaping to be placed along the fence to the east of the building. County arbors and district commissioner to approve landscape plan. Neighborhood retail uses and professional office use only. The following uses shall be prohibited. All automotive-related uses. Pawn shops, title pawn shops, gold or precious metal dealers, check cashing services, tattoo parlors, liquor stores, firewood sales, thrift stores, secondhand stores, or flea markets. All dumpsters, if any, to be enclosed in a masonry enclosure with steel doors that meet county development standards. No trash pickup from the Veterans Memorial right of way. All improvements to the property to adhere to the Veterans Memorial Design Guidelines. District Commissioner to approve color of building and canopy if different than the color shown at the hearing today. District Commissioner may approve minor modifications, except for those that increase the overall square footage of the building, cause a reduction in the size of improved buffer, cause relocation of structure. Well, really can't relocate at this point. That one doesn't apply. Any change that is in conflict with an express stipulation or condition of zoning, or requires a variance, or violates Cobb County ordinance? The last thing is, and I forgot to mention, there's quite a bit of debris around the property, old truck parts and tires and various things. So, remove any debris, tires, any non-compliant vehicles within 30 days of the BOC final decision. And that's the motion.
It's a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? That is proof 40-0. Thank you. All right, John, moving right along.
Hey, rezoning case Z55, Shiv Agarwal, request a rezoning from PSA to GC for the purpose of an assembly hall for suites 29 and 30, and Land Lot 35 of the 18th District, and Land Lot 1298 of the 19th District. The property is located on the south side of Veterans Memorial Highway, the north side of Old Powder Springs Road, on the west side of Old Powder Springs Road Connector, and on the northwest side of Old Bankhead Highway. Is the applicant present? Let's direct show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed, rezoning case Z55? Let's direct show there's two people opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Yes, sir, you can begin.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Planning Commission. My name is John Underwood. I'm with the firm Thompson O'Brien Kemp and Nasuti of Norcross, Georgia. We represent the applicant Shiv Agarwal, the sole owner of the current title holder of the property at issue here. This is the Hawthorne Plaza Shopping Center, which is located on Veterans Memorial Highway. This was a kind of distressed. This was a kind of distressed property when my client purchased it in December of 2017. The sole reason we are asking for change, the present zoning on this property is PSC, and it is surrounded on three sides by general commercial property. However, the reason that we're asking for the change is for a single use limited to this corner for Assembly Hall. Under the PSC zoning classification, Assembly Hall is not permitted either as a use, as a matter of right, or as a special use. So, as a matter of necessity, we had to ask for rezoning to a zoning classification that would permit the Assembly Hall use. GC seems to be the most appropriate rezoning classification based on the properties surrounding this. There we go. You can see that opposite Veterans Memorial is GC to the, and I believe this is north. The east is also GC, and to the west is GC. There's O and I in PSC on the backside, and R 20. Nonetheless, that is the reason for our zoning application is for the Assembly Hall use to be limited to these two spaces. Since we have filed our application, we have also restripped our parking lot to try to increase the number of parking spots. We're having to ask for a waiver on the current required parking, basically because there's no way to increase the parking beyond what we have done by restriking. We were able to add 40 spaces up to 509, but we're still underneath the required amount for GC. Having said that, we don't have any opposition to the recommendations made by staff. It is my understanding that the staff has recommended that we agree to the development standards in this corridor for future development, which we have no opposition to. We have had discussion with the Maryland, excuse me, Mableton Improvement Coalition. Late on Tuesday night, I received a letter from them after we had our meeting with them earlier the previous week with a number of restrictions that we had not really heard before. I responded to that letter on August 30. I know that you guys have a cutoff date of Wednesday. I would ask you to consider my letter of August 30, which I emailed to everyone. The response to my letter, which was made by the Improvement Coalition, cited a number of alleged code violations that, you know, I'm not sure that, I'm sure that I was unaware of any code violations, but they are primarily against the tenants, and I think only one of them may have resulted in a citation being issued. The, one of the concerns that I've seen from the opposition is that there are untagged cars near the auto sales. The, we did go and make inquiry about this on Sunday afternoon. Those cars are cars that were purchased at an automobile auction. They are not issued with tags. The dealer has a dealer tag, that's a magnetic tag that goes on the back of the car. They can't leave those tags on the cars while they're being repaired. We don't know specifically who is the owner of those cars, but we acknowledge that there is no auto sales permitted under the current zoning. And to the extent we've become aware of auto sales at that area, you know, we will take steps to bring our tenants in line, or if necessary, to contact the authorities to have such cars removed. My client, Mr. Agarwal, would you please stand, Mr. Agarwal? Mr. Agarwal is a sophisticated commercial developer. He has numerous properties in this state and in other states as well. He is, I believe, the chairman of the Gwinnett.
Gwinnett County CID, which is J 285.
Yes, he is not new to development. He is not someone who is not afraid to put, who's going to do what is necessary to make this a viable commercial property. There are a number of vacancies at the property right now. The Saveway vacancy, we have a new tenant for that. What's the name of the Gwinnett?
This is actually used to save a lot, they shut down the business.
Would you please, yeah, you need to come up here, Shiv, Mr. Agarwal.
Your honor, thank you. And this used to be save a lot, but because they could not keep the business going over there, they have subleased to a Talpa, which is a Mexican grocery store. They are undergoing the renovation and improving the property, and it's going to be open very soon. And we are trying to improve all the way. We have already done parking lot seal and stripe, cleaning, painting, and looking forward to working with everybody.
And I might add, the general, the common areas there, Mr. Agarwal and his property manager have those areas cleaned five days a week. I am sure that if there's a concern about trash and litter, we would be willing to increase that to seven days a week, if it would make a difference. But we are going to do what is necessary to comply with the code, to have a viable business center there, and to hopefully, one day, have 100% occupancy. With that said, if I might address some of the restrictions that have been suggested here. Liquor stores, adult entertainment, sexually explicit, drug-related paraphernalia. There are no present plans for any of those uses. However, they are also uses that are thoroughly regulated by other sections of the Cobb County Code. I would just submit that, you know, we should not be put at any disadvantage over any other general commercial property that is neighboring on three sides. It would be meaningless to restrict liquor stores. If a tower or someone like that came in, that would be something that would be of interest, I'm sure, to Mr. Agarwal to have as a tenant, or to any other owner of a shopping center. And if they can't rent a space in our shopping center, they will go across the street, if that one day happens. Tattoo parlors, nightclubs. There is no present plan, nor have we ever been approached by those uses. And they are uses that are thoroughly regulated by Cobb County ordinances. I would ask that we not have any restrictions permanently imposed on this property, other than the restrictions that are imposed by the Cobb County Code, the GC classification. Having said that, I have trouble defining some of these uses that they are trying to restrict. Liquor stores, does that mean that the grocery store that's coming in there cannot apply for a wine and beer license? Adult entertainment? Well, what exactly does adult entertainment mean, other than what is in the code? And the code already restricts that. Sales of sexually explicit or drug-related paraphernalia? I don't see that defined anywhere in the code. You know, one person's drug-related paraphernalia is another person's ornament. But, you know, I'm not asking for that. I'm just saying I have trouble with the definition of it. Very good. In any event, that's our position. We would like to, we will accept any reasonable restrictions on zoning, but, you know, I have trouble with some of the definitions that they have here that they have asked us to restrict. Wood sales, for example. Kroger sells wood, firewood. We don't want to have anybody selling wood out of a truck in the parking lot. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Thank you. At this time, if you'd just have a seat, and we'll hear from the opposition.
I'm sorry?
If you'd just have a seat, we'll hear from the opposition.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Robin Meyer, and I'm the chairman of the Board of the Mableton Improvement Coalition. We very much appreciate the recent improvements to Hawthorne Plaza, a shopping center that's been in Mableton for, literally, for decades. I've known Hawthorne Plaza, actually, since the A&amp;P Grocery Store was there. So, that tells you that it wasn't yesterday that I first drove in that parking lot. In this particular instance, we are asking for the same kinds of improvements and stipulations and conditions that we do with all other commercial properties. In fact, the items that you see in our letter are very similar to those that we asked for and that were granted on Hilltop Shopping Center, less than a quarter of a mile up the road, when it was redeveloped. First off, we would ask that you consider the CRC zoning category rather than GC zoning category. That the CRC is an updated, more modern, if you would, category that's much more specific and more appropriate for community activity center. Our single biggest concern has to do with the dumpsters. Presently, they are located on the Old Powder Springs frontage. They are located to the side of the property that abuts the other commercial property. And there are two dumpsters for O'Reilly's Auto Parts that are actually between Veterans Memorial and the side of O'Reilly's, which is the front of the shopping center. The dumpsters need to be placed in enclosures, and the enclosures need to be located either behind the shopping center or on the Old Powder Springs frontage. In addition to that highest priority use, we do believe that it is appropriate to adopt a list of prohibited uses for this property, similar to those that you routinely grant for other properties. We would also advocate for the addition of some landscape islands near Veterans Memorial. We're aware that this shopping center does not meet the code for the number of shopping, the number of parking places. And we too would love to see that parking lot filled with customers. But quite candidly, in the 30 years I've lived in Mableton, and the five years I shopped in Mableton before that, I've never, ever, ever seen this parking lot full. I think that because this property is so large and has so much frontage in this particular corridor, that some landscape islands, in keeping with the spirit of the design guidelines, near the Veterans Memorial frontage would go a long way towards making the kind of statement that it sounds as if the owner of this property would like to make, that there's a new day here for Hawthorne Plaza. I think the improvements made so far are a start, but I think that this would be a good step forward. And lastly, we would like to see the existing pole sign replaced with a monument sign. There, this would not impact any additional parking places. The monument sign could go in the same location as the pole sign. But again, it is, in keeping with the design guidelines, and it is a sign that things have changed here in this part of Mableton. With all of these improvements that we are asking for, we would also ask that they be completed within 180 days of any BOC approval of this application, and that if they are not completed within the 180 days, that no additional certificates of occupancy or business licenses be granted on this property until they are completed. Once again, this is, these are similar, really pretty much routine requests of commercial properties coming in for rezoning for various and sundry reasons. And we are very happy to see this property begin to get some freshening up and some new tenants, and we look forward to this property becoming a part of a new phase for Mableton. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning again, Ms. Chairman and Commission. You know, actually, I had not planned to speak on this particular case this morning. However, after listening to the applicant's attorney make a case for allowing strip joints and other types of businesses that we have worked so hard in Mableton to try to restrict from coming there, I had to get up and say something this morning. And what I want to add to what Robin Meyer just mentioned in her presentation, which everything she mentioned, I totally agree with. But what I want to add to that is code enforcement. This property, Hawthorne Plaza, has a history of code enforcement violations, all right? I'm not going to emphasize, I'm not going to emphasize all the code violations before 2017. For example, in 2017, there were five recorded violations on record with the county. In 2018, there have been six violations. So, I'm asking the commission this morning, in its review and decision on this case, to consider those violations and to make sure that any kind of improvements that are made to this property that incorporates the things that were mentioned in the letter from the Mableton Improvement Coalition. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing no one, it's back to this board, and it's Scott's case.
Thank you, Judy. Okay, I'm going to start out with the zoning category first, because I think it's the biggest item. You probably noticed Robin Meyer mentioned CRC, which is the zoning category we would typically use for a shopping center and a community activity center. And actually, the, our code says in here, and I'm going to abbreviate it, talking about the GC district, that it's mainly for things that are, here's, are generally not listed as permitted. I got a bug flying around my face, excuse me. Generally are not listed as permitted uses within the NRC or, and CRC districts. And everything that they've asked to do is in the CRC district, including Assembly Hall, which is the main reason they're coming in. So, I think the GC categories are on category. And the GC category allows those things that are the biggest items that I would say Mableton Improvement Coalition may be against, such as adult entertainment and the nightclubs. Those are not allowed in CRC, but are allowed in GC. GC is a very old zoning classification that was just put down everywhere, pretty much in commercial, when the county adopted a zoning ordinance in 1972. And it's generally not used and discouraged, and we rarely ever zone to GC. So, I wanted to say that because as I go through this recommendation, it will be deletion to CRC. One of the things that was brought up was the code enforcement history, and there's been kind of two ongoing problems at the property. Trash overflowing from dumpsters, and then these non-compliant vehicles, meaning untagged vehicles, things like that, that shouldn't be parked on the property. There's a pending court trial for the non-compliant vehicles right now. And this year, there's already been a citation paid for the trash, but I can go back and look through several years of code enforcement history, and it's repeating over and over again. So, I think we need to address the trash with dumpster enclosures that meet county code, because the problem's just been ongoing for a long time, and it's the reason why the county, now on all new developments, requires dumpster enclosures. And you'll see, we addressed it on the last case, as well as other commercial cases. I will say, you know, for the applicant, as well as Assembly Halls that CRC is going to add to you, will also add the ability to have clinics, commercial recreation restaurants, and corporate and administrative offices that you couldn't currently do. and corporate and administrative offices that you couldn't currently do with your PSC zoning on top of the assembly. So that's one of them. I did review a lot of the prohibited uses. One of the things that CRC does allow that's not allowed within PSC, but it's often a restricted item, are the more intense automotive-related uses. You know, the light automotive repair that they currently have is fine, but we don't want to see automotive truck or sales or service facilities, you know? In other words, a dealership there. We don't want to see a body shop, some of the parking garage and upholstery, some more intense automotive uses that aren't allowed in PSC, but CRC would allow in some cases. And normally, when we zone those, those are the uses and other things are restricted. So it's just because the applicant doesn't do much in Cobb County, it's very common to pick and pull out different uses within a category. And so either these are the only ones that are allowed, or these ones are prohibited. And to Robin Meyer's point, and you saw it just on the last case where we restricted a number of the subcategories, and if you just look to the lower left-hand corner of the screen, that NRC there is Hilltop Shopping Center that we did a couple of years ago, and that has a number of restricted uses. But I do get the point on some of them. You know, a shopping center is not necessarily a horrible place for a liquor store and that. So there may be some of them there that makes sense. You know, we do understand the light automotive repair may have a vehicle from time to time that doesn't have a tag, but your current category and CRC really don't allow for the storage of vehicles without tags. So I want to make that crystal clear, that there'd be no more than one there while it's waiting repair. And that all those that are sitting there currently, they need to be removed from the property. They just shouldn't be there, and they've been on notice for a long time that they shouldn't be there. Also, no repair outside of the building. I can say, I drove through there last week. I saw trash overflowing from dumpsters. I saw a bunch of vehicles without tags, and I saw them working on cars in the parking lot. None of that's allowed with the current zoning or the future, so we want to make sure we get that corrected. There isn't much room for landscaping on this property at all. There is a grassy strip down, kind of at the corner of Old Powder Springs and Old Bankhead Highway, that we could put a landscape enhancement strip in to at least soften the look of the back of the shopping center. It's not a large one, but it's at least something, and we wouldn't be taking parking. I'd also like to give the applicant opportunity that if they want to do some landscaping islands along Veterans Memorial, that they can, but I'm not going to require that. But I encourage them, maybe if they find they have a little too much parking, as Robin said, I've never seen this parking lot half-full. So there probably is, based on the kind of tenants, but when you get in vent hall use, you may find you need some more of that additional parking. But it would be nice to see a little bit more landscaping along Veterans and make a nicer appearance for the shopping center and the community. I think all future improvements should adhere to the Veterans Memorial Design Guidelines, which you already acknowledged you're fine with and that. So does anybody have anything before I make a motion?
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Okay. Make motion regarding Z-55 to recommend deletion to CRC, subject to all the following: All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. The site plan received August 15, 2018. The following CRC types of uses to be prohibitive: Automotive and truck sales and service facilities; automotive truck and sales service facilities used or pre-owned; automotive truck and trailer lease and rental facilities, primary or accessory use; automotive paint and body repair shops; automotive parking lots or garages; automotive upholstery shops. And then the following additional use restrictions: No expansion of automotive-related uses. And I'll add a note, there's currently one automotive parts store and one light automotive repair establishment. And then prohibitive also: Pawn shops or title pawn shops; gold or precious metal dealers; check cashing services; pawn shop -- I already said that one -- used tire sales; thrift stores; secondhand stores or flea markets. And moving on, all automotive repairs to be performed inside the building, which is required by code anyway, I'm just making it very clear. No more than one vehicle without current registration to be parked on the property at any time. Said vehicle must be awaiting repair at the light automotive repair establishment and may be on the property for no longer than five days. So that means they're bringing it in, getting it repaired, and getting it out, not having them sit around for months. All vehicles without current registration currently located on the property to be removed within five days of Board of Commissioners' final determination on this case. Let's see, eight-foot land enhancement strip to be placed along the Old Powder Springs Road and Old Bankhead Highway frontages, where there's currently grass. County Arbors and District Commissioner to approve landscape plan. All future improvements to adhere to the Veterans Memorial Design Guidelines. All dumpsters to be placed in masonry dumpster enclosures with steel gates that meet county development standards. District Commissioner may approve minor modifications, except for those that increase overall square footage. Buildings cause a reduction. Now, there are no buffers. Not going to relocate any structures. Any change that is in conflict with an express stipulation or condition of zoning, or requires a variance, or violates Cobb County Code. And I'll also add, allow a reduction in parking spaces to place landscape islands with District Commissioner approval, so that if you want to go put in some more landscaping, District Commissioner can sign off on reducing parking. And that's the motion.
We have motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? And that carries four to zero.
Moving into special land use permits on today's agenda. Buckner Crossroads LLC requests a special land use permit for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-storage facility in Land Lots 68 and 165 of the 18th District. The property is located on the northwest corner of Veterans Memorial Highway and Buckner Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP 10? Let the director show us four people opposed. All those folks who wish to address the board, please come forward. We sworn in.
Good morning, Adam Commissioner, Commissioners. I'm David Haskin. I'm from the Haskin Law Group, and I'm representing Matt Dahlhauser and Buckner Corporation LLC. Mr. Dahlhauser is seeking a special land use permit for a climate-controlled self-storage facility. It's located on about four and a quarter acres over at Buckner, the intersection of Buckner and Memorial, excuse me, Veterans Memorial. This property was rezoned in 2009 to NRC. It included, at that time, a master plan of about 18,000 square feet with the strip center and some other development. However, it was not able to go forward as it was, and so there have been some changes. Now, there's a Dollar Tree located on there, which opened in June, and Mr. Dahlhauser has been working with the staff and with the county DOT to get a self-storage facility on this location. The storage facility is located -- this will be located in an area near the Public Shopping Center and the Walgreens Shopping Center around Veterans. There are some -- there's a Dunkin' Donuts and a McDonald's in the area. In other words, most of the area is kind of a light commercial use, and this is kind of in keeping with that use. There is a small amount that is zoned residential, and Mr. Dahlhauser's been working with the residents to ensure that this building is architecturally in line with the residential area. The property that is being proposed is three stories. Now, with that said, there's a fourth story, but that's actually a basement. It would be a three-story structure, and the roof line would cover that third story. So from the front, it would look like a mixed-use development. It would have windows on the first two stories, and then the top story would be covered by a roof line, and that would be used for self-storage. The main level would be used for, probably, most likely, for the actual management of the storage facility, but it would also have some square footage allocated if another business use were to go in. The applicant has engaged in staff with the MIC, with the local commissioner, and of course, with Cobb County. And most of that conversation has involved getting the facility to be in line with the neighborhood, to look like residential construction. So he has gone to great lengths to make it architecturally acceptable for the area. One of the complaints is that it has been that it may look a little bit tall. However, with the covered roof line, it's actually going to be about at residential height, 35, 36 feet. In addition, Mr. Dahlhauser has included buffers, walls, fences. He's including lighting controls to keep the area safe, security. He's also included time restrictions. The tenant he's seeking would only be allowed to be open until 10 o'clock, rather than 24 hours that you sometimes see in storage facilities. He's seeking a national tenant, and by means of that, wants the property to look attractive. And in fact, he sat on the Veterans Memorial Committee when they were deciding how that street should look going forward. So my client's been involved in this from the get-go, and given that he owns this property, he is trying to develop it in such a way that it fits that area. Now, initially, some of the zoning restricted uses that Mr. Dahlhauser is seeking now. However, due to the market conditions and due to the way that has developed, we think that this storage facility is actually a very good use for this. It's a transition, if you will, to higher uses, such as grocery store chains. Right now, in there, there is a Dollar Tree, and this would be consistent with that Dollar Tree, and the master plan has that all architecturally looking the same from the front. The staff commented on this, that there are some variances that might be required the way this is currently set up. One of the reasons the building is placed the way it is, is because my client had to work with DOT to allow, to turn into the facility. Some of the ones that were on the initial plan, some of the ingress and egress on the initial plan were not acceptable, didn't work with DOT. And so he's worked with DOT to provide a D cell lane to get into the property, and also has moved the way the building is structured on the property, which is going to require some waivers so that he can have the parking in the front. One of those waivers he's seeking is a setback from 50 to 15 feet on the front, and the reason for that is to allow for parking in the front area. However, he'd have the retaining wall and a buffer of landscape in that area. He's also seeking that the rear setback go from 30 to 15 feet. Again, that would be buffered with landscaping between that and the property behind it. He is seeking, it says a building to be four stories, but as I said, that's really a three-story building, and from the most levels of the building, it'll be about 35 feet at the middle of the roof line, which is where it's measured to. In fact, it'll be a little bit less than that, but just to be safe, you know, he wants the variance to be within a couple of feet. He's also seeking to waive the maximum allowable FAR from 75, .75 to .87. And while this is a little bit higher square footage for that area, the square footage for the entire development will still be well below .75, which is the current regulation. In fact, it'll be closer to around .5 when all the development is considered. And last, he's seeking a waiver of the 20-foot landscaped buffer to be 15 feet between a property that's zoned for residential but is not developed yet. In putting this together, this project together, he's already got a Dollar Tree on the acreage and has worked with DOT. They have paid $40,000 toward the traffic light for that area, and that's for four lots, so about $10,000 for this particular lot toward a traffic light at the site, as recommended by the staff. So in conclusion, we just ask that this special land use be permitted. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Alan Owens, and I am representing the HOA of the subdivision just, kind of east of the proposed property. We oppose the SLUP 10 based on these three kind of conditions that we've discussed. Basic opposition is a self-storage unit is actually too yah, large for the parcel. It will have an adverse effect on the quiet enjoyment of our neighborhood. There are several houses right across from the proposed location. And then third, there's not enough parking, and we have traffic concerns for that self-storage unit in that area. So I wanted to be short and sweet, and please ask the, the board to reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Robin Meyer. I'm the chairman of the Board of the Mableton Improvement Coalition. And I'd like to address the criteria that the code sets forth for a special land use permit. I've also covered them in my letter to you dated August 28th, along with some other, other items related to this case. But I think most important is that we look at this, as the code asked us to look at this, based on those criteria. It's not often that we disagree with the staff quite as vehemently as we do in this case, but we definitely do. As far as criteria number one is concerned, there will be a significant adverse effect on the neighborhood or the area in which this is going to be located. We can only assume that the staff is assuming that this building can be modified to eliminate the variances and the, and the issues, the areas in which it doesn't comply with the county code. We don't think that's possible if this business is to be viable. It's already small for a self-storage facility, and if it gets smaller, then we wonder if it, if it actually works from a business perspective. Criteria number four, the quiet, quiet enjoyment of the surrounding property will be adversely affected. The homeowners on Buckner Road will be looking at a four-story building almost on the sidewalk. And yes, it really is four stories, because even though the lowest story may be below grade, the first story is above grade, because the, the property across the street from these hot houses is essentially on a hill. The property values of the, of the surrounding property will be adversely affected. I don't know, I can't imagine that these homes on Buckner Road will be, be very marketable when they're looking at a four-story building. And even more importantly, the property to the north, which is presently undeveloped, is relying upon the buffer on the north side of the property under question, where the, where the self-storage is going. That property owner is relying on this buffer for the development of that, of his own property. So if this buffer is eliminated, virtually eliminated, given the fact that this is a three-story building, then that property owner is going to have to give up more of his property in order to make it marketable. Criteria number six, adequate provisions have not been made for parking and traffic considerations. The ordinance calls for clear understanding as to how tractor-trailer trucks will access the loading dock, and that information has not been presented. The plan is not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood uses. Despite the self, despite the staff comments here, this self-storage facility is placed on a residential road, not on Veterans Memorial. And despite the applicant's assertions just a minute ago, this self-storage facility is not adjacent to Walgreens, it's adjacent to residential property. Criteria number nine, adequate provisions concerning the hours of operation haven't been made. Those hours that were mentioned this morning are the first we've heard. We've asked repeatedly for a stipulations letter that would lay out some of the verbal promises we've received over a year and a half of speaking with, with Mr. Dahlhauser, but that request has never been, been complied with. Criteria number 13, the application does not comply with the specific requirements set forth in the chapter for special land use permits. The staff comments seem to be optimistic that, that each and every one of the variances, variations from county code can somehow be overcome, and, and so that as a whole, this project can somehow be feasible. In our mind, it would take every single one of them being overcome for it to be feasible, and we just don't think that's possible. And then lastly, criteria number 14, that there's sufficient information to allow full consideration of the relevant factors. We think not. Again, we've asked for a stipulations letter time and time again, and it's not been forthcoming. So I would remind you that, that, as I'm, I'm sure I don't need to do, perhaps that sounds presumptuous, but this is a special land use permit. This is not a rezoning, so this, the, the criteria are different. The code has given, has given you and the Board of Commissioners the discretion to decide if this particular use is good in this particular location, and we believe it's not. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Sonia Wheatley. I'm also with the Mableton Improvement Coalition. This property, we'd like to point out, we believe that it's correctly zoned, and although this isn't a request to change the zoning, there is an overlay of stipulations that have been existing on this property. Coming at the, what's before you now with a special land use permit would essentially negate that. It is required, according to those stipulations, this particular portion, which, as Robin pointed out, was indicated that it's, you know, in a business area. It's not, it's the corner that's in the residential space. Those, anything that's built there is supposed to be residential in appearance. It's supposed to have residentially styled windows, height, the parking is supposed to be interior. There was a lot of thought put into the conditions that were put on this property to protect that neighborhood and what will be a neighborhood behind it. There's not a hardship. You know, the, this is a pretty serious request in reduction of buffers on all three sides. And, you know, if this were typically before you guys, if it were before the zoning variance, there's a need for hardship. I want isn't a hardship, and that's really all we see here. It would cause significant impact to the adjoining properties by granting these, I mean, 50 feet to 15 feet. That's not, it's not a two-foot stretch. That is significant. We respectfully ask you to decline this lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Here in San Antonio, back to this board, back to God.
Thank you, Judy. I keep drawing the short straw down. Yeah, I think there's, you know, it wasn't directly said, but for anybody who doesn't know, there's other business item pending for this site as well that would, you know, seek to modify some of the stipulation and, and site plan for this parcel that will be going forward to the Board of Commissioners when this SLUP goes forward. But, and I want to point out, some of what Sonia just said about, you know, it's supposed to appear residential, residential windows are actual stipulations on the property right now for this out parcel. This out parcel was considered separately because it is directly across the street from houses and backs up to residential zoning as well. So it wasn't, she wasn't just saying, hey, it kind of should. That's actual the stipulations on the parcel, which they're going to seek to have changed, but those are the current stipulations. Let's see if there's, so I wanted to point that out. This facility's a little bit, what they're proposing is a little bit smaller than a typical self-storage, but it's very large for this parcel. You know, the, the FAR staff calculated it at one number, which was over, which is typical allowed. I calculated it much higher than staff. I don't, couldn't figure out exactly how they got to their number, but I use the out parcel site for calculating it. And, and that, but to me, it's, it's way large. The side where you're going to see from, even though there's a basement, because of the slope of the property, you're going to see four stories directly across from the residential. That doesn't feel very residential to me. Plus, you're going to see a retaining wall. And, and part of doing that is eliminating the setback that's currently required. Right now, it's a 40-foot setback required on there, down to 15. So the idea was to move all the parking inside so it wouldn't face the residential in the stipulations, and make the buildings look residential, much like you might see, you know, some of the professional office and things like that, that could, could have those characteristics. This is going to be a towering, at that point, directly across from these houses, four-story structure. So that's concerning. Then you look at asking to reduce the, the setback along the RM8 property. It's only 15 feet, which means you can only get one row of plantings there, so it's not going to be much of a buffer, and, and we didn't get a attractive-looking product on the back at all. It's, it's as unattractive-looking self-storage as I've seen come forward to us on that side. The front's attractive, but the sides aren't. You know, and you would want that, being that tall, to be further away from the residential property, not closer. And you'd want the full 20-foot buffer the, the code requires. I think, you know, as we go through here, hours of operation, you know, the loading dock facilities aren't really well-defined. You know, there, there's a lot of things, and one of it, the code says in NRC that these are to be two-story. Doesn't say two-story plus a basement, it doesn't say, you know, we'll bring the roofs down to hide the third story, it says two-story, because you're still raising the roof up, you're just making a longer roof. So there's, you know, from, from my point of view, and I was going to go through the list, but I think Robin Meyer hit most of the points on, you know, the, I agree with what her analysis of it, that this is going to impact those properties adversely, that this is just way too big of a scale on there. And I don't think you can reasonably shrink down the self-storage and have it be a viable self-storage, so I don't think it does any good to, to do a hold and have them go back and try and redesign it. You know, had they pushed the Dollar Tree over farther on the parcel, a lot more room for self-storage, it may have worked, but they've already built the Dollar Tree, so there's really no, no option to do that. So unless there's further discussion, I'll make a motion. Make motion that we recommend denial of SLUP 10.
Motion for denial. Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second, in favor of denial. And that carries four to zero. Thank you. John, what else do we have? Are we finished on the minutes? I have a motion by Skip to approve the minutes and the, what was it, did you say, the special call. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Yeah, second. A and D, second by A and D. All those in favor? Aye. That's approved. No, we move right on. Thank you. We are now adjourned.